Approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
So moved in properly, second, they approve our agenda, all in favor. Motion carried. Board, we need a motion to approve our consent items for approval.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve your consent items.
Moved in properly, second, they approve our consent items, all in favor. Motion carried. There's no public participation?
Thank you.
Moving right along. Washington County Schools will be led by Twenty First Century Professionals. Board, we need a motion to approve our personnel report.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve personnel report.
Second.
So moved in properly, second, all in favor. Motion carried. Good news.
Right. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I just want to mention two things. JRTC has been very active this year. They've done a lot. Sergeant Major has given them a lot of extraordinary experiences. On October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, Bold orchestrated a training with AIT tour at Fort Greg Adams for the JRTC students from Washington County High School. Traveling three hours from North Carolina, the students gained invaluable insights into the multifaceted operations of the Army. The training included M-4 training at the Engagement Skills Trainer, meticulous inspection of parachutes at the Rigger School, and an exploration of the gastronomic processes at the Joint Culinary Arts Center. Further enhancing their understanding, the students also learned about water purification techniques as well as sampled purified water at the Petroleum and Water Operations Department. Lastly, the students had lunch at the dining facility known as the Warriors Cafe. Overall, this tour not only provided the students with practical exposure and understanding of Army operations, but enriched their perspective of Army life and fostered their interest in potential Army career fields. Then, again, Washington County High School JRTC Panther Battalion traveled to Fort Liberty for a day to meet your Army cadets. Were offered the, excuse me, afforded the opportunity to have conversations with active military personnel, participated in simulations, performed modified physical training drills, learn about Army life, and visit the home of the airborne and special operations forces. It was a great learning field experience. The forty-eight cadets were the only ones to participate from the eastern part of North Carolina. So again, they're doing fantastic things under the leadership of Sergeant Major Arnold. So I want to thank them for that.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Chairman, we have the Rural Utilities Service Grant, the RUS grant, and I'll have Ms. Simpson provide that information.
Mr. Smith and I worked on a grant to put technology into our new building through the RUS grant. It's a federal grant that we have to apply for. Our county ranks very high at being able to be eligible for this because of our income status, because of our morality, and I am very excited to let everybody know that we did get awarded the grant.
Okay.
Total cost that we submitted was for six hundred one thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars. We do have a ten percent, excuse me, fifteen percent match, so we were awarded five hundred twenty-two thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars. And it will put information technology screens in all of our two through twelve classrooms and all of our CTE, all of our elective classrooms.
Awesome.
It will do all of our communication, like conferencing for our collaboration centers, our conference rooms. That also goes to our ALP and our early college to ensure that they, we can do like information technology back and forth. And because we have been very fiscally sound with how we've purchased our clear touchboards, we'll make sure that we are, pre-K one wing also has that same technology.
Awesome.
So we're very excited about it.
Thank you.
Awesome. Give another round of applause to Mrs. Simpson, Mr. Smith, for your fine work in getting this grant. Thank you so much for all your hard work. I look forward to seeing those screens. Washington County Schools will be governed and supported by Twenty First Century Systems. We have committed updates. Ms. Jordan.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna use part of my time to Mr. Paul Carson, our auditor, and he's gonna share with you the audit report. I sent the draft to you ahead of time, and you have the book now that I'll present after him. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Carson, how are you?
Yeah, how are you doing?
Great. Good to see you. Thank you.
Y'all doing well, Seagun?
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes.
Each of you should have a bound copy in front of you of the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three audited financial statements that we've issued. You know, the financial statements cover two main areas that we're required to issue reports on. The first being the financial section, which covers the first sixty pages of the report, followed by the compliance section, starting on page sixty-one. There's just a couple pages of the financial information in the audit report that we've planned to go over, but before we do that, on pages one and two, and there's no need to actually turn there, is the audit opinion letter that we issued on the financial station, or the financial section of the audit. And we're happy to report that it is a clean, unmodified opinion, which means that we feel that the financial information is, including the report, is reliable and free of any material misstatements.
All right.
So the first page I would like you to turn to is page thirteen. We'll look at exhibit three, and while you're turning there, exhibits three and four are essentially the balance sheet and income statements for all of your governmental funds. These schedules show the fund activities and fund balances on a fund-by-fund basis. And in the first column on page thirteen, the next, the last number at the bottom of the page, you'll see the general fund, fund balance as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three was one million one hundred sixteen thousand three eighty-five, which was a decrease of about a hundred and fifty-seven thousand from the amount reported in the prior year. And looking at the other funds, the Special Grants Fund had an ending fund balance of eight ninety-six, seven eighty-two, capital outlay, eight sixty-two, two twenty, and individual schools, one oh five, one ninety-four. And I know I mentioned this last year, and again, we're reiterating this again for all our districts is, you know, with all the uncertainty in the economy right now, rising costs, minimum wage increase, rising healthcare, rising retirement costs, you know, we do feel it is important for the district to make sure they have extra fund balance and cash reserves for when the federal COVID funds do expire in a couple of years. And we feel these rising costs will all weigh more heavily on the school systems once that federal funding does expire. But overall, these funds do appear to be in sound financial condition with good cash reserves at June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
All right.
Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
On the next page you want to turn to will be page sixty, and we'll look at the School Food Service Fund. And this schedule, much like the last one, shows the revenues and expenses and change in net position or fund balance for the School Food Service Fund. And about, about two-thirds of the way down in the middle column, you'll see the program reported a profit of one hundred seventeen thousand eight oh nine. And the previous year, the School Food Service Fund reported a profit of eighty thousand dollars. So that's a year-over-year improvement.
Coming up.
About thirty-eight thousand. And that improvement in profitability was primarily due to a reduction in overall operational costs, while revenues stayed fairly consistent with the prior year. And cash balances in the program were a hundred and sixty-nine thousand at year end, which was a decrease of about a hundred and twenty thousand from the prior year. But overall, the program appears to be in good financial condition as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. So are there any questions on that? Okay, and then next, we'll look at the compliance section, which starts on page sixty-one, but a significant portion of the audit is related to testing boards and control controls and compliance with various state and federal laws and regulations, primarily pertaining to the state and federal grant funding received by the district. And starting on page sixty-seven is the schedule of findings and question calls related to our compliance and internal control testing. Now, we did note one finding that is reported on page sixty-eight, and I will say that is an improvement over last year. You may remember there were four different findings, so this is one that just still held out there. But this finding comprehensively summarizes the violations of the School Budget and Fiscal Control Act noted during the audit. It is a repeat finding from last year. The general state public school and capital outlay funds expenditures exceeded amounts appropriated by the board in the final budget resolution. This was because budget amendments were not prepared when needed. Details of these budget violations are located on page thirty-five, if you care to look at those. But we just advise that, you know, management and the board should ensure that no obligation is incurred by the district unless the budget resolution includes an appropriation authorizing the obligation and an unencumbered balance remains. And we will follow up on that finding as part of our June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four audit. And, but does anybody have any questions before we move on? And we're also required to issue a three-page letter. Y'all should have been with the booklet. And that just details specific audit items that we're required to communicate with the board about. The letter, which is based in boilerplate language, it discusses that there were no difficulties or disagreements encountered with, in dealing with management during the audit. There were no uncorrected misstatements were noted, although it's, you know, no uncorrected misstatements were noted, and no other reportable issues were noted during the audit. But overall, we felt like the audit went very well this year. We'd like to thank Ms. Jordan and her staff for all their hard work.
Absolutely.
Yes.
There's definitely a lot of information.
Absolutely.
There's a lot of information requests in the audit, and unfortunately, it falls primarily on finance to get that to us. So we really do appreciate that they're helping getting everything completed and things going as smoothly as it did.
Thank you.
But are there any questions for me before I wrap up?
No, sir. This is good news. Should have put you on the good news.
Really?
I probably feel like you just moved it up.
Really? I had that right up.
Nothing to report.
Do what?
Nothing to report. Awesome.
Thanks.
Move on.
Green light.
Awesome.
Thank you.
We appreciate you all a while. Our kind of work with you.
He ready to write something. He ready to write something.
Yes, yeah, it hasn't been approved by the LGC.
Bless him up tonight.
Yeah, so technically, these are not public information yet. They have not been approved by the LGC. It was submitted November fifteenth, but, you know, I was checking my emails before I came in, just to make sure that we hadn't gotten approval. That's not uncommon. You know, this time of year, it might take a little bit. So these are not technically public information until that does happen, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan.
All right, the Finance Committee met on November seventeenth, and we have some action items for the board. Our, our first action item is State Budget Amendment twenty-four-ten. And on this budget amendment, this was the reconciliation of the allotments when the budget was passed versus what I had initially projected. And so all the budgets are increasing except for instructional support. What happened, and we had an allotment for the past two years for school psychologists, and we were not able to use the school psychologist allotment because it was so restricted. And so those funds went back every year, but this year, what they did was they opened that allotment up to not only be used for psychologists, but also for school nurses or counselors. So our actual school counselor instructional support allotment decreased by two positions, and then this school psychologist allotment increased by two positions. So you're gonna see the fluctuation there because they allowed it to free up. So that's why the instructional support has a decrease of fifty-four thousand. And the other thing that reduced down was the driver's education by nine hundred and ninety dollars. But overall, all of our anticipated allotments went up. I still do not have the restart transfer information yet, and I do not fully have the ninety-four zeros reduction, which is the NERSBA reduction, but I'm anticipating a little over four hundred thousand to be transferred out of these funds to NERSBA. And once all of that is finalized and I have the restart numbers, then I'll be able to finalize the state budget. But as it stands right now, the state budget with these amendments will bring it to... Go up, up, up. I want to get to the next page. Keep, yeah. Is there another page there? Yep. Right there. So that'll bring our state budget to twelve million eight hundred five thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars and one cent. The next budget amendment I have is Federal twenty-four-eleven, and for our federal budget amendment, this was planning allotments versus actual allotments. So our federal allotments did come in, and overall, the budget increased on our federal allotments based on the projected plans. And our total federal fund at this point is six million four hundred thousand three hundred eighty dollars and nineteen cents. The next budget amendment I have is child nutrition. After I got the audit, I looked at the actual revenue for child nutrition, and so I'm reducing that budget down to exactly the actual revenue we made last year, so that this way we can make sure we're intact. We still have ways to grow on the child nutrition budget to be able to be at two months operating balance. We're not there quite yet, and so this is gonna be a reduction to just their budget, their operating budget. And so that budget is now going to be, if you'll pull up child nutrition for me. There's nothing there? Okay. Child nutrition is reducing down by twenty-three thousand sixty-three dollars and seventy cents. And these are all anticipated revenues. This is not actual until it's actually actual, till we get our reimbursement, but this is what I'm just guessing their revenue will be for the year. The next one is special funds, and for our special funds, there was some technology damage fees that we got in for thirty dollars. And I believe that was the only thing I see there. Yeah. And so that brings that budget to one million seventy-three dollars forty-four, seventy-three thousand forty-four dollars and seventy-six cents. So those are the budget amendments for this month.
Okay, so Board, we need a motion to approve State Budget Amendment twenty-four-ten, Federal Budget Amendment twenty-four-eleven, Child Nutrition Budget Amendment twenty-four-twelve, and Special Funds Budget twenty-four-thirteen, as presented.
Salute.
Second.
Moved in properly, second, all in favor. Motion carried. Thank you.
The next, thank you. The next action item I have is to ask for some more funding to be appropriated for transportation. Last year, we did get a permission to appropriate eighty thousand to the Transportation Department. At the end of the fiscal year, I never did use that eighty thousand because I was moving funds around on June thirtieth, so I was able to cover down on that. We were able to get a lot of reimbursements back last year for transportation that we didn't get prior year before, so that eighty thousand, in effect, wasn't actually used on the Transportation Department. It just ended up back in fund balance. So at this point, after we implemented the state raises, and after everything is going on right now, the way the department is running, I'm anticipating at least eighty-six thousand right now to balance their budget, just to cover that, because I don't have all my revenue just yet. I'm not sure what I'm gonna get. But I don't believe it's gonna be as high as it was, and so I know for sure I'm gonna need to ask for that. And if that department is not under control soon, I might have to come back more for that. So that's kind of where we are with that, but eighty-six thousand would just be the base. And like I said, I did not use the eighty thousand that I used last year, so it's not like we're doing it two years in a row. This will, in effect, be the first year that if we use it, we use it.
How much, how much are you in the red over there?
I'm in the red, the eighty-six thousand. That's just to balance the budget. That's just to actual expenses based on, you know, the budget, like my staffing and all that stuff.
We are balancing if we do eighty-six.
Right.
For to take us out of, that'll just take us out of the red and put us in the black.
Correct, because then...
So should we do, I'm just asking, should you do ninety?
Well, what I would like to do is for when I get a new transportation director, to sit down with them and look at that budget again and get more actual accurate figures. The more time we get, the more accuracies we get. Mr. Stokes has been tremendous in working with me to try to get me as close as possible, but it's hard to make that transition because first of all, I have to look at salaries again, and then I'm also gonna have to look at needs. Like, Mr. Stokes is just like hedging, saying, well, I'm not buying anything because, I don't know. When a new person come on, they might be like, I need this, this, and that. And so I want to be able to be accurate. I want to put a bunch of money out there and be like, woo-hoo! I want to be honest about where we are, and so, right. And so if they need it, then we can come back and ask for it, but if they don't need it, I don't want to forcibly put it there. You understand what I'm saying? Like...
So just that eighty-six is what we need to be?
Yes.
All right now.
Okay, all right. So I seen this said need at least eighty thousand, but then into this description over inside.
Right, because I was, I was waiting for Mr. Stokes to get back to me, and I had to get, I had a deadline to get stuff to Ms. Pettiford. So at the time, I said eighty thousand, but then later on, that day after I had my meeting, I got further information. I was able to update the budget again.
Eighty-six. All right. So Board, we need approval to appropriate fund balance in the amount of eighty-six thousand to balance out the Transportation Department.
So move.
Second.
Moved in properly, second, all in favor. Motion carried.
And so then the information items, the way in there was the board report showing you the spending for each one of our funds to date through October, the board expense report through October. And then there was one thing that was so funny. We, we got a note that said, you had a hundred and fifty thousand to spend down in child nutrition, and that's why that spend-down plan was there. And after we did the plan, we realized that was a technical error, and we don't really have those funds. And so that's why I crossed it out, and so that's what that was all about, but you were ready.
You know it was.
Sorry about that, Mr. Rosinoff.
So are there any questions for Finance?
No, ma'am. Y'all have any question? I'm gonna say thank you again for you guys' fine work with the audit. We appreciate you.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, thank you. Policy Committee?
Unless there are any questions, we have no comment, but they will be posted for thirty days. The Approval of Policy eighty-three twenty-five was posted. That's the daily deposits.
That's ready for approval, isn't it?
Ready for approval. The next were the information, the twenty-two school board policies will be posted for thirty-day review on the school board website. The Policy Committee went and reviewed those for updates to discuss what they meant in implementation, and they will be posted for public viewing.
Okay. Board, we need a motion to approve Policy eighty-three twenty-five, the data deposits. Moved in properly, second, all in favor. Motion carried. Okay, School Improvement Plan Presentations. Have two that's gonna present tonight, and the others, we will approve after we've... Hear from Ms. Carmack, Crestwood Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
My name is Jayla Carmack. I'm the principal at Crestwood Elementary School, and this evening, I stand before you to present the School Improvement Plan of Focus for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I didn't know I had the power.
Yeah, you got the power, girl.
All right, all right.
There you go.
All right. Amen for the mission and vision. All right, CES Vision: Learning in Every Classroom, Every Student, Every Day. At Crestwood Elementary School, we seek to create a constructive learning environment that encourages students to be lifelong learners and productive citizens by providing a personalized education for every student and collaborating with parents and community stakeholders. Take good truck.
All right now.
All right. All right, CES Theory of Action. We believe at CES that if we create multiple pathways for learning and an inclusive environment of social and emotional wellness, and we strengthen our global educators and engage our families and communities collaborative partnerships, we will ensure that all students have equitable access to resources. Then we will provide each student with personalized intervention and accelerations and advance the achievements, success, wellness of all students. Next slide. All right, quickly looking at the data. This is just comparing the data for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year compared to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. For third grade reading, we had a twenty-four average. For the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, there was a slight decrease to twenty for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. For third grade math, we had a fifty-nine average for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and there was a slight decrease to forty-eight for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. For fourth grade reading, for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, the average was forty, and there was an increase to fifty-six for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. For fourth grade math, the average was ten for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and there was an increase to twenty-eight for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. For fifth grade reading, there was a forty-four average for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, which there was a decrease to thirty-eight for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. For math, there was a fifty-five percent average for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and there was an increase to sixty-seven for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And lastly, for fifth grade science, the average for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year was fifty-five, and there was an increase to seventy-one for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Yes. Next slide, please. All right, so our focus indicators for the school year is C-two-oh-one, A-one-oh-six, A-one-oh-three, and E-one-oh-six. All right, Indicator one, C-two-oh-one, states that the school regularly looks at school performance data and aggregated classroom observation data, and uses this data in order to make data-driven decisions on school improvement and professional development needs. This ties directly to our goal number one, our goal one for this year, which is to improve student reading achievement by ten percent by the end of June twenty twenty-four, and this will be done by the following action steps. We will continue to implement with fidelity an phonemic awareness and phonics program in order to build early literacy skills and support core instruction. We will continue to provide professional development for teachers on effective research-based strategy, instructional strategies. We will continue to utilize data-driven decision-making to identify struggling students and provide targeted intervention. And lastly, we will encourage and support a culture of reading through school-wide initiatives such as Drop Everything and Read. Indicator number two, A-one-oh-six, states that all teachers will provide a sound instruction via a variety of modes, whether it be teacher-directed whole group or teacher-directed small group, which directly correlates with goal number two, which is to improve student math achievement by ten percent by the end of June twenty twenty-four. And the following action steps will be taken to ensure we achieve these goals. We will continue to revise and align our teachers' lesson plans and classroom practices, practices, excuse me, to state standards and research best practices. We will offer additional support for students in the form of in-school and after, after-school math tutoring. We will provide teachers with ongoing professional development and providing effective math instruction. And lastly, we will foster and encourage a growth mindset in students to boost their confidence and engagement with the math material. Indicator number three, A-one-oh-three, states that the school will promote a school culture in which professional collaboration is valued and emphasized by y'all. And specifically on this, not just amongst the adults, but we are promoting collaboration, professional collaboration amongst our students as well, which correlates directly to our goal number three, which is implementing strategies and techniques to create a positive student school culture shown through an increase in positive feedback via frequent surveys. And the action steps are as follows. We will continue to conduct regular surveys to gather feedback from students, parents, and teachers on the school climate. We will establish a student advisory council to address issues related to school climate and culture. We will continue to implement a school-wide positive behavior support program to encourage positive behavior via PBIS. And we will continue to offer social and emotional support to students in order to develop their emotional intelligence and interpersonal skills. The last indicator we have here is E-one-oh-six, which states that the school regularly communicates with parents, guardians about expectations of them and what is expected of them at home and how they can help their child's learning. This ties directly to goal number four, which is by the end of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, the goal is to increase the level of feedback and involvement from parents and community stakeholders as evident by survey participation. The action steps that will be taken to ensure that we meet these goals are as follows. We will continue to hold regular parent-teacher conferences and house, open house events. We will continue to establish a parent-teacher association in order to ensure that all stakeholder voices are heard. voices are heard. We will continue to organize community engagement events such as family literacy nights, community service projects, and science nights. And lastly, we will continuously update our school website and send out our Cub Corner Letters weekly in order to keep parents and the community informed and involved. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
Y'all have any questions?
No, that was very well planned. Good job.
That was good.
Good job.
Did a good job, I must say.
Very thorough.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your service.
Let's give Crestwell a hand. We're here from Mrs. Fields. Ms. Fields.
Thank you. She wants to give you that.
Might be something coming, see?
Uh-oh.
I might been prophesying.
He tried to speak it for you.
I might been prophesying tonight. Oh, boy. Lifting his weak side.
Hey, the vision. The staff at Washington County Early College High School believes that all students can learn and achieve at a high level. We dedicate ourselves to providing an environment conducive to the development of each student's potential. And the mission at the Early College is Washington County Early College High School's chief priority is to inspire and empower scholars to be successful in one's community, college, career, and life. A few weeks ago, our data was shared with you by Ms. Northley. And as, Mrs. Peel, whoo! And as you can see, we have taken a slight dip. So the indicators and our objectives are all going to address the dip. We failed eleven point six percent. Two of our areas that were tested were, well, three of our areas did exceed growth, but we are struggling with biology. We did not meet growth. And so we are definitely looking at how we are going to make sure that we are meeting growth in all of our classes and that we are proficient in all areas. So, Goal One, Washington County Early College High School will maintain an A school performance grade. And the objectives under that, we are going to maintain that A by improving our grade level proficiency in biology by eleven point seven percent so that we can have an overall proficiency of seventy percent by the end of the 2024, 2025 school year. We also plan to maintain that performance grade by improving grade level proficiency in English Two by five percent for an overall proficiency of eighty-four point two percent by the end of the 2024, 2025 school year. We also plan to maintain that grade by achieving and maintaining ninety-five percent grade level proficiency in Math One and Math Three by the end of the 2024, 2025 school year. And we will graduate college and career-ready students by achieving and maintaining a four-year cohort graduation rate of greater than ninety-five percent by the end of the 2024, 2025 school year. That goal is tied to key indicator A, one oh four. All teachers assess student progress frequently using a variety of evaluation methods and make appropriate curriculum adjustments based on results. Our action steps, all teachers will use the provided CARES pacing guides to create lessons that are aligned with the North Carolina standard course of study. Our teachers are using the standards to guide their instruction and their formative and summative assessments. Teachers in EOC courses use check-in data to develop reteaching plans and to guide their after-school tutoring and classroom small groups. And all teachers use teacher-made assessments, exit tickets, and research-based projects as forms of evaluation. Our Goal Two, by 2024, 2025, ninety-five percent of Washington County Early College High School students will graduate with a high school diploma and an associate's degree. The objectives, we will hold monthly meetings with the students at the Early College and on the BCCC campus to ensure that they have a support framework in place to ensure their success at each level of transition. We will utilize a systems approach to data-driven problem solving, our MTSS, to eliminate achievement and opportunity gaps. And we plan to streamline the communication process between the Early College, Beaufort Community, and home to convey the opportunity that scholars have as an Early College student. This is tied to key indicator A, four one six. The school develops and implements consistent, intentional, and ongoing plans to support student transition from grade to grade and level to level. Our action steps, all students will visit BCCC prior to transitioning to in-person classes and on campus. We want to make sure that when the students get on campus, they are well aware of where they can go study, where the tutoring services are offered, how to get from point A to point B. Anybody that they need where to meet Mr. Lewis, just so they are, we don't have anyone calling going, "Okay, this is what's happening, and I'm stuck." We've taken them and they've done tours, but it hasn't been an intense tour to where it's kind of like, "If you need this, this is where you need to go." So before they set foot on that campus, as a student, on day one of class, all of them will have to visit to go through a transition. Admin, we're gonna continue to hold CAPS meeting with the students, just, you know, to let them know, "This is what you need. This is your course of study." If we see them falling behind, we get alerts and we call them in and we talk to parents to make sure that they on target, that they are on target. We plan to have parent meetings to explain the expectations as the students transition to taking Beaufort classes from their first ACA transfer class until they actually transition to campus. What we are finding is that a lot of times, the parents, they understand that it is an opportunity, but they really don't know what goes with it. So we get a lot of calls of, "They say they don't have class today," and they don't even understand where they only have a Monday, Wednesday, Friday. But Tuesday and Thursday, they need to have their computer on working at home. And so just getting them to understand that. And then we are also gonna work with Mrs. Harris, the Career Development Coordinator, so that she can do counseling sessions to really help them with career planning. So they are more intentional about which associate's degree they choose and any extra classes that they do choose outside of that track for their associate's, that it is related to something that they hopefully will use as their career planning, whether they get just the associate's or whether they do decide to do a four-year. We just want everything intentional so that everything you take has a purpose and not just to get an easy A in it to help you. Goal Three, we will enroll at least thirty rising ninth-grade students to attain an overall enrollment of at least one hundred students by the 2025, 2026 school year. And looking back at Endastar, see that this has been a goal probably since about 2022, 2023? So we are looking at, you know, how we're gonna do that. We're going to revamp our recruitment and application process for the upcoming year. We're looking back through it, seeing what do we like, what don't we like, what maybe we need to consider and whatnot. And we're also looking at instituting monthly seminars that encompass the skills promoted by a portrait of a graduate to just help our students with preparedness and retention. This is tied to key indicator one, E-106, Family Engagement. The school regularly communicates with parents and guardians about its expectations of them and the importance of the curriculum of the home, what parents can do at home to support their children's learning. So we're gonna make our expectations clear with open house, ninth-grade summer bridge, and with using Mr. Brandon Lewis, our BCCC college liaison. We're going to hold parent meetings to ensure that all parents, like we getting back to that, understand the privileges and benefits of their child being at Washington County Early College High School. We are definitely going to make more attendance calls. We do have some students, yes, even at the Early College, who are having attendance issues. And I'm telling my teachers, you need to be intentional with those calls, and we're making those parent conferences. We are gonna have face-to-face meeting with parents when the students are in academic trouble to discuss next steps. I can pull that student in all day, every day, and ask them, "Why are you struggling? Why do you want to withdraw from the class?" But then sometimes when you pull that parent in, and the parent is like, "They're never doing anything at home. I didn't think they ever had any classes." So it's important that the parents understand what is expected. And then we are going to create a PTO. We have a lot of parents who, like I said, just want to know and just don't know. And so this parent-teacher organization can definitely be that bridge between the information that we get through the schools, through Beaufort and everything, to get that all to them. And make sure that our parents are familiar with the resources that we use, tutor.com, Google Classroom, Canvas, and our district curriculum platforms. If they know what this looks like and how this is, then when their child is like, "Well, I don't have anything," they can say, "Open up your laptop and go to Google Classroom and let me see if there's anything in there. Do you have any zeros? Did Ms. Evans put any work in Canvas? Why are you struggling with this? Ms. Peel said you have tutor.com, and you have your login. You need to log in right now and request a session." So we want to make sure that parents know what is there to assist their students. We also are tying this to key indicator E-202. The school provides a broad spectrum of communication through meetings, announcements, newsletters, and a consistently updated website. A goal is to have an open house at the beginning of each semester. We always have one at the beginning in August, but I think January is kind of like, "Okay, we need to do this again because some of your little loved ones were struggling last year, and we had a few issues." So let's just reiterate again the expectations. We plan to consistently post on the school's website and Facebook page, weekly calls informing just others, the community and everything of what's happening. We are going to create a new brochure. We haven't had a brochure in a while. So we're gonna create a new brochure, and our newly-formed SGA is gonna work on those Republic Relations brochures so we can have those for our recruitment events and everything. And we are gonna look at recruitment activities at Washington County Middle School in Pocosa, as well as if I've learned through the Early College Network. We're going to reach out to some of those homeschoolers because some of their parents would love for them to have some dual enrollment. So might be getting some in them eleventh and twelfth grade.
All right, all right. Come on with it, ma'am.
Okay, are there any questions?
I'm gonna ask this question, I'm gonna comment. What I like about this is the parents' involvement. And that's a good idea to keep the parents involved in what the student is doing, by homework and all.
Yeah, we, there is like, like I said, it's when, you know, in a traditional setting, they kind of know, I know that throughout the day, you go to these four classes, and I'm expecting you have something. But it's once they kind of make that transition and letting the parents know, "Hey, I understand that Beaufort sees them as adults, and we can't see their grades, but you can tell him, 'I need you to log in the blackboard, and I need to see exactly where you sit.'" It shouldn't be that it's when we're calling them in with a, "Hey, if they don't do something, we're gonna have to get them, you know, to withdraw from this class or something because it's not looking too good." And the parent's going, "I don't even know how to see it." So we want them to know because they're still the parents.
Exactly, exactly.
Thank you. Thank you for your transparency.
Appreciate that. Great job, great job, ladies.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks to both of you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Mr. Heiser, Mr. Peel did theirs last time, so I say good job to everybody.
Okay.
Welcome, gentlemen. I'm not lost. Yeah, I'm sure. Board, we have a motion to approve the school improvement plans as presented. I'm not gonna go through each one.
So move, sir.
Second.
Been moved and properly second, all in favor. Motion, carry. Ms. Chair, do you have an update for us? For Nerzbo?
The only update I have is that it, we never got to a vote on our resolution. So we're still there, and that's where we are right now. They're still doing a lot of improvements and things around the campus and adding more classes and doing all that kind of stuff, so that's where we are right now.
You know, I'm always standing on the fact that we are losing a lot of money. We are losing a heck of a lot of money going, going there.
If I might, I'm gonna try to meet with the director there and see if we can have a discussion about if the board is not prepared to vote on letting us come out, are there ways that we can save some money, some cost on what we do? I don't know if that is gonna help, but at least we'll have a face-to-face to share some of our concerns.
Okay. Yeah, I'm gonna leave it alone. New building update?
Right, we had our meeting, and several of you, I know that you two were in, in, in attendance last meeting. A lot of accomplishments, a lot of work is being made. If you pass it on Route 64, you can see that walls are up.
Route 64.
You gotta get that Virginia out of you.
The Virginian in your speech.
U.S. 64.
Coming out, it's me, okay?
Turo and all that, all them counties. Come on, Dr. White.
I'm gonna get it together, I promise you.
U.S. 64.
Highway, let it be a highway.
Highway 64. So you see that a lot is being done. We are hoping to post some of those updates monthly here, moving forward on our website so everyone can see what's going on. Slab on grade concrete was placed at section 200. Ninety percent of foundations are poured.
Should be all done now, though.
Underground, you're correct. Yeah, they were, they were gonna finish that up.
Will be finished, so we should be a hundred percent.
Underground for electrical is completed at section 200. Underground for plumbing is completed at section 100 and 200. Masonry has been topped out at section 300. Current work, slab on grade, placed SOG at section 100 and 200. Footings, part of section 600 perimeter exterior wall footing is remaining. Masonry, working on going vertical at section 200. Continue laying block at perimeter gym. Underground utilities, electrical rough in at 100 and 700, and plumbing rough in at 700. Upcoming work and milestones, and again, this is, there's a little lag because we had these meetings at the end of last month. Installation of Ruth pre-cast plants to start on November 20th and continue through mid-January. Roughing in in the underground plumbing at section 700 to be completed. Roughing in in the underground electrical at section 600 and 700. Continue pouring slab on grade floor at section 600 and 700. Complete section 600 foundations. And again, they've done tremendous work. They are really getting out in front of this. Our, I remember at one time, they had mentioned that there might, they were behind, but I think that they picked that up, and their date, their ready date is November 2024. So we're excited.
Our reminders and other items of interest?
If I might, there has been one update. You see all the things that we have coming up in November and December. For the PES Teacher Night at McDonald's from five to eight, that date has been changed from November 30th to December 14th, correct, Mr.? Thank you, we've got that there. And you see, we have the town parades coming up and a lot of fundraisers. Is there something that we're missing for a program? Ms. Jordan, is there?
January, districts, where?
Yes. Oh, there, is there? Am I missing it?
It's not up here.
What is that date, if you'll give it to me, please?
January 4th is the date of the event, it's Thursday.
It's not up here.
And that's when we'll do the school supply refresh.
Okay. So school supply refresh, January 4th at Washington County Middle School. And-
What time?
That is going to be at-
It starts at 3:30. And the highlight event will happen about 6:30, between 6:30 and 8 o'clock.
And that will be a basketball game between students and staff.
Oh, my.
You playing?
I can smell the bean game. Already.
They're waiting on your answer.
I tell you what, I'll be there to support y'all.
I'll be in the vicinity, I'll say that. I do that game for free.
I definitely support y'all. I know Ms. Stokes is gonna play.
Oh, yeah, we're looking forward to her.
Yeah, we know this. Ms. Jordan and-
Mr. Peel.
Oh, Ms. Stokes is y'all coach?
Player coach. Player coach, all right.
Okay, good, good, great. That's good news. We're gonna get ready to leave, but I do want to make one comment. I do know that, and this is not our last anybody, but we've had, of course, that shooting that happened in our community. It was tragic, both families involved, but leading out in the local paper was that Washington County Schools closed because of that event. Well, I just want to make it clear because we gonna tell our own story. We never know situations and how they unfold and what happens, but we will always err on the side of caution and safety when it comes to our schools. So I want to make that publicly clear tonight, that we do not do things like that because it was something that involved the school. So when we make those kind of comments, when it comes to that, put it farther down in your article. And just say that there's, you know, you can go on down to the end with it. But I just want to make that clear. I just feel like sometimes, you know, we, when people Google, when they want to move and when they want to go places, when they pull, the first thing people pull up is schools. And if we continue to put negative stuff out there when people Google to come here, especially just building a new school, people decide to come here, they'll pull, well, God knows, they can't even go to school because people being shot or killed. That has nothing to do with Washington County Schools. But one thing we will do is err on the side of caution when it comes to our students and staff. I want to make that clear tonight. And I'm gonna, I'm, I will say it, and to the death of me, I get tired of the negative publicity. So we gonna tell our own story. Okay? And, and I'm clear, I'm clear about that. On the board or off the board, I'm not gonna die and go down like that. It's gonna, we gonna tell our story the right way.
Yes, for sure.
So you take that back to your staff.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, anything else, claim my attention? And we haven't had a board meeting, that's why I ain't had time to say it. I ain't going to social media. I talk to your face. Thank you, all right.
We good.
We good?
Yeah, we good.
Okay, well, we need a motion to recess back into clothes.
I make a motion that we recess back into closed session?
Second.
Thank you. Y'all have a blessed night.
Amen.
Yes, thank y'all. Appreciate you.
Now quote me. Quote me.
Y'all, give me one minute.
Thank you for your transparency.
Give me one minute.
I appreciate you, you know, I appreciate you. I appreciate her good thing.